You need permission from your computer?
Okay, now I figure it out.
Dang, technology is getting ridiculous. Okay, good deal, good deal.
Can you see the screen now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so this, this is the question that I looked at earlier, these, all of these here.
Okay, so um, how, how did you do with that first one?
Um, I just get a copy of right here.
The teacher understand, I'm just, I have to teach this thing, that the teacher understands the importance of oral language nor knows the developmental process. And provides the students with varied opportunities to develop listening and speaking skills. It's so important, oral language proficiency is like the determiner. Um, of success, the better that a student can articulate their needs, the stronger. The better that they can advocate for themselves, so getting them. To practice listening and speaking skills in varied settings. Um, with different speakers, different models, um, different opportunities. It's invaluable to the learning process, to all learning processes, like math, science, later when they're adults. So can't be understanding, sorry, I had to say that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I like that.
Okay, so. No, 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 you go, you tell me what, what, which ones you had difficulties with, or?
Okay, I'll just go to that question, okay, number four.
Okay.
Here.
Okay, so. Number four, which the following silent reading practices. Provides the best conditions for student individual reading improvement. So that's a lot of stuff, what's the question even asking, this first thing like, what is the goal of the question, what is it asking me, put it in your own words?
The, uh, okay, so basically, what do? Is the following, what do a teacher needs to do that are best? Uh, get the student to be able to. Understand. The reading?
Yeah, so we wanna see that, we wanna see improvement on their reading, right, self-improvement, we wanna create the best conditions for that. So they've already told us that they gave us silent, silent reading practices, which are the following silent reading practices they gave us for. Create like the best environment for them to be able to improve by themselves, because we're not gonna be instructing them, they're gonna be silent reading. So the goal is self-improvement by individual. The student is best able to self-improve, right, cuz if it's individual reading improvement, um, they're doing it alone silently.
Okay.
Which one of these is best for that?
Well, I know it's not B.
Yeah, that's preposterous, like that, and first, no, and none of that, but so, and, and this is a good point. If any of your answer choices are overtly negative. If they leave out a section. Um, that's not gonna be the answer. If it's limiting in some way, like if it's like, oh, we don't have enough to go around, no, that's preposterous, this is a theoretical exam. In theory, there should not be limitations, the teacher should know all of these things, and that she shouldn't be grading papers while the students are reading, that's never gonna happen.
Mm-hmm. And then I, um, well, I see the answer is D, but I kinda didn't understand it when I first read it, I kinda X that, um, X that one out. Cuz I guess it said participated in scaffold asylum reading for twenty minutes every day while the teacher. Um, gets with the student individually about their reading, I didn't really kinda, I always think when I read that, I was like, okay, well, why would she? Stop, uh, let them silently read while she get with her student and individually and get with, you know, I didn't really know. Why that will be the answer.
Right, so let's take a look at it, um, and also another, just a helpful tip, sometimes. Looking at the verbs that the answer choices use is helpful, so you have engaging, you have dropping. Dropping is so negative, like I can't imagine that that would be like, the participating, reading. And for me, just like looking at the verbs, engaging and participating are the best sort of like words. Um, right, so participating in scaffolded, so that's a strategy in which like you do a little bit. A little bit, um, here, and then you build on it again, and then you build on it again, so scaffolded silent reading for twenty minutes every day. Um. While the teacher confers individually, the reason that this is useful, it's still silent reading. She can't get to everyone in the day, I would imagine, which is why it would be scaffolded and. Having them reflect and discuss the text. Is going to A force them to read while they're silent, re-reading, cuz they know like I'm gonna have to talk to her about some stuff in a little bit, so I can't just like stare at the pages, right? Say something, like, so that's A, but B, it helps them verbalize and like bless, so maybe some of the things they didn't understand, or like. She was here, and then all of a sudden, she was in trouble, but I didn't understand what, and it helped, that dialogue helps them, and obviously, the teacher's gonna be able. To help them flesh through those things, and then they revisit it again, whole bunch of stuff happens in the book, maybe I don't see her for two or three days, talk to her. But I'm like, what happened, what's Johnny doing in the book, did he ever, and then, oh, we were right about that, or we were wrong about this, and so. That will help their reading improvement, because, um, that conference with the teacher will help them flesh through some of the. Confusing concepts, and like I said, that, that, um. That added accountability, like knowing I'm gonna have to talk about this later. Is more helpful than just watching the teacher read, because that is important, like it's important for the students to see that their teacher is a reader. Their teacher can read and sits and reads for extended periods of time, that too is important. But this is the best answer, the best one for what, for individual improvement. And in order for that to happen, we gotta be talking about it, you gotta understand this stuff, you have to have a dialogue about the text.
Ah, and then it says in the question, individual reading improvement, and then D, it actually says individually about their reading.
Absolutely, they use those two words together, like it's a little bit of a, a light bulb and not one, but yes. Careful reading, careful, careful reading, not just the, the questions and the scenarios, but also the answer choices too, because sometimes just one word in the answer choice makes it wrong. Um, and here, one word in the answer choice really makes the best answer choice, because you're giving that individualized. Help for improvement.
Okay, okay.
But, uh, what, what did they say for the other ones that were wrong, I just would like to see what?
Oh.
Oh, see, receiving to help, receiving that support, so that support, that added support. Is going to do more than just watching the teacher read, for student improvement, right? Um, let me see what the other one, eh? Okay, so there, there is that accountability, if you see, A is incorrect, because. Providing little direction to the students in terms of reading materials, there's no way to guarantee, there isn't a guarantee. For student success or participation, if you were not talking about, if there's not some sort of something that is going on. And this is a really great strategy, because there is that little gap, since you can't get to everyone the same thing, and it's sort of like a novella, tell me about what you've been reading about them, I've been waiting all. Uh, all day, you know, two days to get to this, and it, it, it adds a little bit. Um, more to their assignment than just like having to get it done. Um, no accountability, uh, that one as well. B is incorrect. Yeah, that's a good point, um, reading silently, anytime independent work has been completed. This limits, like, this means not everybody gets to participate, and that's what I mean, like, if it's limiting, so like, okay, so the kids who were. Sort of fast with their work, they get to read and improve, maybe, maybe, who knows, because we're not checking up on it, nobody's talking about it. But then what about the kids who took their whole day to do their work, like, they don't get. Extra time to read, that means you're limiting, you're leaving out, and that cannot be ever the answer.
So, okay, so is the, I know it says because students are receiving support through scaffolding. Is scaff, what does that mean, does that mean something, because I've seen that word before multiple times?
Yeah, scaff, scaffolding is you don't do it all at once, you build on it a little bit, you build on it, and you build on it, like stairs, yeah.
Two brains got for reading, okay, so Bill, just betting in the build of reading, basically, and then be between them every day while the teacher, okay.
Yeah, so they're not gonna talk to the teacher every day, um, and you'll be building on those, you'll scaffold those. Interviews, though, that particular strategy in order to help them with the, with the reading, their readings.
Okay, okay.
Okay, good, excellent, um, was there another one?
Um, well, I would like to do it how, like how you were gonna do with the other one, and we just can go over them, so I can get a better, um.
Absolutely, you wanna start at the top?
Yeah, well, we can start at number, oh, it's. Yeah, we can start by get number, we started number one already, we did number one. No, we can start at number one.
Okay, so you have a fourth grade teacher notices several students who are shy and reluctant to speak in class. Like automatically, I know this is oral language, because it's about speaking. So they're shy and reluctant, what strategy would be most effective? And I get nervous when I see most effective, most beneficial, blah, 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 because I know that they've given me more than one. Appropriate or semi-appropriate responses, we use many, many strategies, we don't just pick one. You might do all of them, but there's one that is most effective, based on the information that they've given us, based on the student's, um, age group, and they're in fourth grade. So what strategy would be most effective in motivating students' participation in class? While enhancing their listening and speaking skills, so this has, this question. Um, cuz I'm already rewriting it in my brain, has two parts of it, I want to motivate their participation. While also enhancing their listening and speaking skills, I'm trying to do two things, I wanna motivate them. So I'm looking for the best way, the best strategy with which to, um, help motivate shy kids in my fourth grade class. To enhance listening and speaking skills, so based on that analysis, what do you think would be the best course of action?
Biddy? Because, um, I guess they give him the student opportunity to share, so they're gonna talk. And then to the stories.
It's the only one that has both, it's the only one that's doing both, sharing and listening, like sharing and listening. Explicitly, yeah, and so they told us, these are the things that I want for you to have, and they're listed there, the, the speaking and the listening. So that's actually the only one that could be the right answer, because it's the only one that addresses the key words we identified.
Mm-hmm. And then, I think they try to trick you with the encourage student to orally respond, like.
Absolutely. They do try to trick you with that, absolutely, to orally respond, um, to the higher level thinking questions, but think about it, if you have these shy and reluctant students. Certainly, you, uh, you can encourage all you want, but that's not going to assure participation or anything like that. Um, allowing them regular opportunities again. So maybe the kids who feel comfortable speaking are gonna be the ones who are taking advantage of these regular opportunities, and still everyone's not. But if you have, um, if you're giving them opportunities to both share and listen in these smaller groups, which is not just like. Absolutely, and it's like baby steps, so they can do the whole, allowing them to share in front of the class, but you don't jump from, from shy and reluctant to. What they're suggesting here, and you would never allow them to permit the students to choose which groups they feel comfortable speaking to. That is a way for kids, um, literally the way that they've been doing grouping since the beginning of time, and it's why people don't feel comfortable working with people who they don't know, and they. That are different from them, and we're supposed to be carefully crafting our groups to be diverse, like different socioeconomic. She doesn't live in your hood, like this girl is on the, the cheerleading squad, and you're on the softball, like having them, you know, different.
Alling their kid to work with somebody he wants to work with versus, if he wants to work with this person, he's used to working with this person, so.
He knows everything about him, they probably have the same perceptions, same experiences, they're gonna bring nothing new to, no new lens to the table, and so it.
Shyness, because he knows this person, so he's not shy.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, okay, okay. Let me see, okay, I got number two right, got three right, we went over four. Go to number, I'm gonna write number eight, I got that one, let's see, number eight. Okay. Number A.
Okay, as part of a unit in which students explore the most significant discoveries in the last hundred years. A fifth grade teacher wants to include activities that expand students' understanding of new vocabulary learned in the unit, so. The goal for this teacher is to expand vocabulary, vocabulary expansion. Um. Of the new vocabulary they learned in the unit, which of the following activities would likely be most. Effective for the purpose of expanding vocabulary, and they're doing as part of the unit, for the most significant, like, last hundred years. Fifth grade teacher wants to include activities that expand students' understanding, so they already know this vocabulary, cuz it's, they've learned it in the unit. And then when he wants to expand on it, I mean, build extrapolate, make it bigger.
Already know the vocabulary.
Uh, cuz they're as part of the unit, as teacher wants to include activities to expand on their understanding of the new vocabulary. Learned, they learned it in the unit.
The unit, okay.
They learned it in the unit, he is building on what they already learned, he's not teaching it for the first time, this is very important, that, that little piece of information.
Oh, so definitely D, because now they already learned, they already know it, you're gonna want them to write it in a response that include their new words, so they can know how to use that word. And you know that they understand that word, because they know how to use it, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, that, that's, you got it absolutely right, that's it. You see, you don't even need me.
Oh, and number ten, that's, that, yeah, I were gonna go to number ten, I was completely lost on it. Cuz I know what an expo, oh, I know what expository, but no, I don't, I'm thinking of, um, narrative and. Um, if narrative and, one dozen, I'm not sure, but yeah, I forgot I'm team.
Okay. Third grade students are assigned to write about their city after reading various texts about it. Which of the following types of writing will best allow students to include academic vocabulary they learn from the reading? Okay, this is one where you just have to know the different genres. But. You might have. Been able to, um, use process of elimination, it's certainly not gonna be rhyming poetry, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's not gonna be rhyming poetry, like, um, they're writing about their city. After they read various texts, right, and it's about their city, what kind of text do you read about your city?
And.
Like who writes about your city?
Like the news.
Right, newspapers, news, so they're probably reading various texts about their city from like their local newspaper, I'm assuming. And so, um, autobiography, like that's the one that might be somewhat confusing, because it could be about them, but it's not about them, autobiography. Is about the person, and they're, they're gonna be writing about their city, um. Typically fictional stories don't have that much academic vocabulary, but expository texts do, because expository texts explain, and they are. The types of texts, like magazine articles, newspaper articles.
That's what I, and that's what I was trying to say a few minutes ago, I was gonna pick C, but I was like, is not talking about magazine, newspapers, or any of that. But I guess when it says you're reading about the city of various texts, you can read that in a magazine, you can read that in a newspaper, anywhere. Okay, so, yeah, so what is the other one, it's expository, and then it's the other one that means like narrative, expository.
Yeah, you have a, right, you have expository narrative, and, um, so the narrative is like a fix, well, it's not fictional, but it is a literary piece, it's a creative piece, right? Expository pieces are, are not, although they can, they're, they're not meant to be creative in nature, they're meant to be explanatory, they're meant to be like. How-tos, let me, um, show you how this works, let me show you what this town was like, let me show you our amenities. It exposes and explains, it's a text that, um, explains to the reader, more so than entertaining the reader.
Okay, see, that's reading communication, I don't get any of those, right?
Okay, well, um, and.
Number, number ten, I got number ten right. Number, oh, yeah, thirteen, that was, I was on thirteen, so I guess I don't know my, I originally picked. Um, I picked D, but then I, um, seen that the answer was B, and when I looked at the concept map, I was kinda confused, because the concept map kinda looks like a flowchart. So I was like, uh, I knew it wasn't a line graph. And when I saw animals, I was like, okay, maybe a bar graph, because they could have the different animals in, kinda what they.
Right, so the concept map, um, let me just read it really quickly, a first grade class studies animals and categorizes them as either sea animals. Pet zoo animals or farm animals, the teacher wants students to create a visual to display. The categories, where did you get this, sorry, my children. Excellent, okay with it, um. To display their categories, which of the following will best display the information, so it is like a flowchart, but, um. It's where they're able to put like the con, like, so they would put pictures of animals on there, like, and, and that would be their, their concept map, so. Um. Having all, like, let's say. They had little cutouts, and they would give them a sheet, they have, my, my kindergartner does this all the time, I know this, cuz I have to help her cut things out, cuz we do remote learning, so I'm like, they're helping her cut out, I'm doing kinder again. Um, at thirty-nine years old, so there, then we have to be like, okay, these are words that start with a B, because it's a ball. And then we put them in, like, there's a B column, and we put all the, all the pictures that start with B in the B column, that's a concept map, so it's a. A little bit different than a flowchart, um, but I could see where that might get confusing, and so then we put all this, all the pictures with a C in the C column. And so that helps them, um, utilize a, a graphic to sort of categorize the different things that they learned visually.
Oh, so basically with this question, they're basically saying, okay, I wanna put all the sea animals under this, put all the animals under this, put all the.
Yes, yes.
Concept map, okay.
Right.
Okay, 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 okay.
So that you're tying the concept, and you're categorizing based on what the different concepts, right, so for my daughter, it's the alphabet, right? And, and visuals, so that's the concept map that we're using, and we use pictures that correlate with the different letters.
Yeah, okay, 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 um, the next one I also got wrong is number eleven. Speed it up, I know my, it's my time, so number eleven, let me go to it, where did it? Oh, wait, that's.
Here we are, there. No, a teacher works, is that one?
Wait, number, no, that's number fourteen, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this particular competency I'm just looking at is about assessment, so we're assessing developing literacy, like how do we assess where they are? And then where do we go from there, the teacher understands the basic principles of literacy assessment, and uses a variety of assessments to guide your instruction. So that's all assessment really should be, uh, as a guide, not like a punitive thing, but like as a guide to better planning and instruction. But I digress, okay, so which of the following assignments best assesses, I've literally seen this on the English exam. Um, it's a good one, yeah, um, which of the following a- assignments best assesses students' use. Of quotation marks in writing, so this is a, a sort of a tricky one, a little bit. Um, quotation marks in writing. We're looking to assess whether they can use it or not on their own, which means that they would have to, in their brains by themselves, come up with the type of writing that would utilize quotation marks. Which one of these would best utilize quotation marks for us to assess? So we have a journal entry describing the outcome of a science experiment. I don't know about you, but there's probably not gonna be much, um, you know, right? A compare and contrast essay about two battles reviewed in social studies class.
No, because they would just be kinda like, um, explaining facts about.
Right.
Quoting anything.
Exactly, um. A persuasive letter to the school board about the school dress code.
Um, no, because they're just writing a letters, explaining, you know.
Right, I don't think I've ever, yeah, I don't think so, um, hold on one moment. Um, and then you have a personal narrative about a time the student disagreed with a friend.
A person there about a time, a student disagreed with them, oh, so they basically be writing a story, and they could say that this person said this.
This, this person said this, and then I said this, and then she said that, and I'm putting quotation marks all over the place, yes, absolutely, so that dialogue. That one would be the piece of writing that would allow them to utilize dialogue, cuz they're gonna have to explain, well, she said this, really cool, use where your quotation marks, right? So this is the only one that allows them to do that, and to do it possibly more than once.
Right, okay, 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 I've got my next one, I've got my next one. Uh, that was fourteen, I think I got fifteen wrong as well. See, I got fifteen wrong as well, I think, I think I got the rest wrong at this point, so yes.
Probably your brain was fatigued.
I was at work as well, so I was kinda like.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, for sure. Okay, a fourth grade teacher wants to help students become more aware of their literacy development, so this is like self-assessment. Fourth grade teacher, what?
They want the kid to be aware of what they can improve on.
Yeah, of their, where am I, and where do I need to go, I need to begin monitoring my own progress, because we, that's the goal of us all, is to have our students be self-learners. And in order to be self-learners, they have to engage in metacognition, it's a buzzword that people throw around, but it literally only means thinking about my thinking. I do it all the time, thinking about my thinking, I'm like, did I do this right, could I have done it better, blah, blah, to my detriment. We want the students to be thinking like, did I understand that? Kind of, maybe, but you know what, I didn't understand, I come and I come, like, they need to be able to do that, to assess their own understanding. And so we have to sort of give them baby steps and opportunities to practice, um, monitoring their own development. All, all the way along, and especially in their, in their literacy, um, so that's the goal of this fourth grade teacher, she wants the students to become more aware of their literacy development. And better monitor their own progress in reading and writing. To best help the students track their own development, they're using all of these own and their progress, so. The answer has to be the student, you know, doing it on their own, and the teacher's just sort of like helping, uh, the teacher should have the students do what?
Right, I'm gonna grade level, I don't know.
So, and I don't want for you to just, to, to cross out an answer choice unless you can bet yourself five dollars, that's just sure not the answer, where you're like, okay, I know this is not the answer, because. This wouldn't help at all in helping them become aware or monitor their, their development.
I should, I should eliminate that answer with that in mind, with what they're looking for in mind, saying that.
Right.
You have to, okay.
Exactly.
Um, complete a daily journal. And to reflect on what they have learned that they, see, I think that's the one I. Want to reflect on what they have learned that they, see, I think that's the one I choose because I know that I had read something that said that teachers like um journals are a big thing in education. I read it somewhere, another friend.
No, they they definitely, they definitely, definitely are. Um, but.
But see.
Just completing a daily journal to reflect. There's really no, it's sort of like a big oasis of what are they gonna write about? And it there's, that really is so unfocused. Um, but we do utilize the uh journals in in wonderful ways. Like I I literally have students that leave my class and then they go off to college like myself. So that I kept your journal and I used it for my college, blah blah blah. And it makes me happy, but um but I could see why that is not the right answer. Let's take a look at some of the other ones.
And the next one says, uh, see specific and individual goals regarding, or say specific individual individual goals regarding improvement they want to make. So I guess that's them as the student is setting a specific goal that that specific, an individual goal that they want to make the improvement, right?
And remember, remember, when you're looking through these and you've asked what she wants to help them become more, their where their literacy development and to monitor their reading progress. She wants to help them track their development. Can you track their development with a daily journal reflecting on like whatever it is they told from something? You can't. There's no tracking in that. And and they said tracking and so we have to say tracking too. And it has to try help help them track their development, help them monitor where they are and help them track where they're going. On their own.
And then the next one, work with apartment, pardon is a complete weekly running records. I didn't really know that, what that was.
Um, weekly running records, like, oh, maybe I read five books. But this is with a partner and that's not them keeping track of their own stuff. That's like you've included somebody else and it's, you're not even doing yourself anymore.
So with the keyword and number C kind of be like individual goal.
Yes.
They want to make.
Reading improvements they wanna make because you want them to be aware of their literacy development. So they have to be able to identify to you, you know what, miss? I'm not good when you call, when you call me in class. I say words wrong, but I know what they are. And so maybe it's reading fluency. Okay, we're gonna help you with reading fluency. So this is what we're gonna do. But having them reflect on what they know and what they feel uncomfortable with or not not strong in is is having them do metacognition. And then helping them set those goals and revisi- revisiting with them is gonna be the best way to help them track their progress and and monitor it. They'll be able to do it on their own later. They won't even need us.
Okay, okay, okay. Now we got last couple of ones, uh. Let's see. Okay, okay, sixteen and seventeen is the last one and then that's, that'll be for that one. So um, let's go to I think it's sixteen and seventeen is the last one, yes. I didn't understand it at all. I think I got seventeen right, but I think I kind of guessed.
Okay, well, let's take a look. First grade teacher plans to use the following passage from a nonfiction text. Not fiction. As an introduction for a series of literacy lessons about tigers. So she's gonna give them an expository text. That's what nonfiction is, like expository. Um. As part of the unit, students will use a nonfiction excerpt and other research to create their own stories about tigers. So that is her plan. She wants to use a nonfiction introduction for a series of lessons about tigers. Okay, this is the passage. The tiger is a large cat. I wonder if this is important and I have to read this.
And that's what I was thinking. It's like, can the the question kind of literally, I was like, do I even need to read the passage or do I go to?
Let's just read it. Let's just read it. So the passage, the tiger is a large cat found in Asia and parts of Russia. Most tigers are black, white, and orange, although some are only white and black. They can run at speeds of thirty five miles per hour, even though they are the largest cat species. Tigers can weigh four, oh my lord, four hundred to six hundred and seventy five pounds and their bodies can be up to nine feet long. Is your body as long as a tiger? Tigers are endangered in the wild because people often destroy their forest homes. In the United States, tigers can be seen in cages, I'm just kidding, in zoos and wildlife preserves. Have you ever seen a tiger? The following is a fictional story written by Jack. To create their own story about a tiger. So this is Jack, the student. Read that nonfiction and this is what he produced because they're supposed to create their own stories about a tiger after. So this is what Jack came up with. Sammy, the ba- the baby tiger lives at a zoo in Texas. He liked to play with his toy ball. He also liked to play with his brother, brother and sister. So let's take a look. Which of the following text element is most appropriate for the teacher to introduce in preparation for the writing assignment? So we're talking about text elements. What um? What should she introduce to the students? What's most important or appropriate for them to know? Um. Inclusion of illustrations, plot development, incorporation of fact. Uh, conflict resolution. So.
I understand, I kind of don't understand what the question is asking.
Text elements are the features and the features of um the writing. And they're asking what what portion should she teach before the writing assignment? Before the students do their writing assignment, what portion of text elements would is most appropriate? Do they need in order to complete this assignment? So let's go back to what her assignment even was. Um. It's part of the unit. She uses, students will use the. Create their own story about a tiger. So they're gonna create fiction, I'm assuming, about the tiger. So what's important to um teach? What are the text elements associated with stories? Hint, 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 story. Um, what is the most important text element of a story? Are they always resolved? Are are conflicts always resolved?
No, not in a story.
In a story?
No.
No, sometimes they go unresolved. So that wouldn't be the most appropriate. What about incorporation of facts? Are there lots of like facts in stories? Like where you'd have to like incorporate all sorts of facts, like they weigh five hundred to six hundred pounds?
No, you don't have to.
No, that's not, I mean, it's important if you're gonna teach expository, incorporation of facts absolutely is a text element that you have to give in a lesson before you have them write in expository text. But she, and this is so tricky because they didn't even tell you. They just said story, but stories are fiction because it's like a story. I'm telling you a story and there's a plot, a story plot to it. And the story map where there's like the beginning, the rising action, the climax, the falling, um. What was it? Inclusion of illustrations. Now, is that super important for a writing assignment for you to go big on the teaching of the illustrations?
Like this, the teaching of the drawings, right?
Right.
Oh, well, no.
No, no, for sure. A plot development um is the way that a story works. How do stories work? They begin the exposition. We are introduced into characters, right? The development, plot development. How do plots develop? It begins, we introduce characters, there's some sort of conflict rising up to it. And then there's that falling action and you either go, you either end at a conflict resolution or it's de numai, which means things are left reasonably tied together, but there is no true resolution.
Okay, so apply the bit, okay.
Right, so, yes. So that that's the one. Um, and I think you'll remember the graphic, the the graphic that we utilize. It's the, it's that pyramid. So it starts off the the plot map where you go up to the pyramid to the point and you go down. You have the climax at the very, that's where the conflict is, at that climax, right? Then you have the falling action and then you have the resolution or de numai. Which is like French for nothing was resolved, but it ended, so bye.
Okay, oh god, okay, last one, seventeen.
Sure. Okay, which of the following comments from the teacher best addresses the strengths and weaknesses? We want both. So this is a comment in which both strengths and weaknesses much must be a- addressed. Now, weakness, um. He has, he he says he like instead of likes, he also liked to play. So there's that.
Oh, on this question, we're looking at what he wrote.
We're looking at, we're looking at Jack's written, uh, his fictional story. That the student, so Sammy, the baby tiger, lives at a zoo in Texas. He liked to play with his toy ball. He also liked to play with his brother and sister. So we see some issues there, small mistakes. Uh, but he has it. I mean, he he told us. Um, he also doesn't have any conflict or anything like that. Let's read what's going on here. So this is girls, uh, five more minutes and then you can be as loud as you like, okay?
Eight times in with with like sixteen, like you need to add illustration, like she, the teacher doesn't. You, the teacher wouldn't tell him to add illustration in writing like this. I mean, I would hope that.
Yeah, for sure. And that doesn't address the strength. Like, where's the addressing of the strength?
Yeah.
That's just like, maybe, I mean, I don't even know that it's weakness, but in any event, it doesn't address a strength. And it has to be addressing the strengths and weaknesses in the writing. You did a great job using punctuation at the end of the each sentence to organize your thoughts. So that's, yeah, that's just a strength that he did do that well. Have you considered using a dictionary to help you identify misspelled words?
That's a weakness.
Have you considered adding more details to describe the tiger cub to complement the sentences you created? So that's like add details and you did a really good job creating those sentences.
So she compliment, she said to compliment those sentences that you created. So those, like you just said, she's telling him that you did a good job with those sentences, but.
She said the complete sentences. Not only did you, you you did complete sentences. That's a goal. Like, now let's add a little bit of detail to them.
So it will be D.
Absolutely. D, because it addresses the strengths and the needs. It's the only one that does both. So none of them could, even if they said brilliant things, they couldn't be the right answer because they didn't do both the strength and the weakness. Remember, look for those key words because they're gonna help you eliminate some of those wrong answer choices. If they don't address specifically what the the question is looking for.
Okay, 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 okay. Okay, I feel really good about this section now. Oh.
Good, I am so glad. I'm so, so glad.
Yes, I feel great about it. Um, so how do I reschedule, like schedule for like another day in time?
Sure, yeah, just let me know. Um, right now I have a pretty open schedule. I have a couple of sessions tomorrow and a couple of the the next, but whenever you need it. I know you're on a, you know, a timeframe, so you just let me know.
March Thursday, so I can do it tomorrow after work. Or I know you say you you can do some early as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So during your conference period or tomorrow after work is fine.
Conference period, well, when now we start, they kind of like messing up our conference periods.
Oh, see, that's what I meant, like, I that's what I I mentioned that maybe with star that wouldn't be possible because I know that the Jack Gels conference. Like, go take, go take this room, let him go to the restroom, like, go look over here, stand next to this book.
So what what about tomorrow? Um, sometime I can check my schedule and you can, I can let you know what.
Sure, just send me a text. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and tomorrow we'll be able to kind of do the same thing, I guess, with this and then go over like um maybe so- social studies and.
Absolutely, we'll do social studies or whichever, whichever other ones you'd like to do.
Okay, perfect, perfect, perfect. And this is normally how I go, we go over the these things and you just.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, um, and we we also um take a look at the the standards. Like, I'd like for you to look at the standards, like, if we're gonna do social studies tomorrow, take a look at the standards tomorrow. And I'll um create a little slideshow of the teaks because the way that they have them, they're not on a PDF and they're literally just on the website. So you can't like just, you know, it's so annoying.
Looked at, I was like, ah, what am I looking for?
I know, it's overwhelming. It's so overwhelming. It's like, does this page end? Like, why? So I'll take a look, I'll 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 screenshot some and we'll take a look at them and and see how they can help in in the process of your study.
Okay, and with what you just emailed me, the the social studies uh standards are near you. Let me look at those.
Yes, yes, take a, just do a close, like, if you can print them out and and maybe highlight some of the concepts or things that you're unfamiliar with and we'll go over those.
Okay, okay, I'll do that. All right, and okay, I'll just take you those day of time tomorrow. I really appreciate.
Absolutely. No, yes, it is my pleasure. It's literally what I love, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have a great night.
Yes, you have a good evening. Okay, bye bye.